I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, you designate your role.
I can do that. Fryrick?
Here.
Posnow?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
Skellett? Schrader?
Here.
Sears?
Sears.
Toman?
Here.
Watts?
In the absence of public, we will skip the public comment and we will move right to Mr. Sears and Mr. Toman. You want to take it since you're senior? That's what Mr. Toman says.
All right. Okay. So the facilities committee, should I just read the motion first?
Yeah.
We want to go into the background. Okay. The facilities committee recommends board approval to change order for the East York Elementary Heating and Cooling Water piping project in an amount not to exceed $75,555 for the additional work to be performed on the HVAC system.
Second.
Mary, would you like to give us sort of overview of your letter?
Yeah, I can. And this obviously was prepared by our engineers that we wanted heavily involved in this, but part of the, a good part of the existing piping in the building, and we did evaluate the existing piping that we're reusing prior to the project and found it to be in very good condition, so that's why we did not attempt to replace that as part of the project. It would have added a large amount to the project and considerable time to replace that that we wouldn't have had this summer. So we decided to reuse it, which was the proper way to go. With that system sitting dry for a couple of months over the summer, it developed a lot of leaks. A lot of the gaskets, that's what you call the actolic system. It's a system of pipe that's put together with clamps and gaskets. As the gaskets dried out over the summer, some of them developed cracks and now refilling the system noted several leaks. So they obviously have to address the leaks. And looking at that same time, they noticed that there was a little bit of, not scale, but mud laying in the pipes too, which is not unusual. You'd find that even at your own homes. So their recommendation is while we're doing this, we flush the system out once, possibly twice with the chemical to loosen the sludge and dump, well, clean the pipes basically is what we're doing. The concern is if we don't do that, with that sludge in the pipes, all the new units that they're installing have balancing valves on and they have very fine filters on. And the belief is that those filters probably will clog up and become a continual maintenance item to clean. So their recommendation is since we're dealing with these leaks, we flush the system out again, once, possibly twice, depending upon how it goes with an acid solution. We also install a filter in the boiler room for future needs and that's pretty much where we're at right now. It is a costly process. We're not sure at this point, now they did identify most leaks. They repaired, I think, all the leaks as of this weekend that we're aware of. What happens is all that piping is insulated, so if there's a small leak, you don't see it for days. Could be weeks until you really see it and then it's going to show up on a wet ceiling tile. So, and that's not really unusual. So they think they have all the leaks because without removing all the insulation, you just don't know that. So we might encounter something in the future, but at this time, they think they have all the leaks. They had filled the system up with water, they drained it, they didn't put any chemical in yet because that's part of this change order. They drained the system and the water was muddy. They, we observed that, it was muddy and it does need to be cleaned or should be cleaned to do it right. So that's kind of where we're at.
So filling the system with water where the leaks popped up, that's essentially equivalent to pressure testing?
Yeah, what they did initially, they filled it with air, 100 pounds of air. And part of that was, the feeling was that would help reseat some of these gaskets and these grooved fittings that they have. And that was a recommendation of the manufacturer. And it may have helped on some of them, but not all of them. The system contains glycol, I don't know if you know what glycol is, but it's almost like an antifreeze that they put in a heating system so that there's no possibility of freezing pipes if you have a failure of any sort. So the system contains antifreeze. Well, the glycol is scheduled to come last Monday and be pumped directly into the system. Well, we felt it's best not to put glycol in a leaking system because it's very tough to deal with glycol if you have a leak. The glycol has to be collected, pumped back in because it's a chemical. Now, it's a safe chemical, but nevertheless, it's a chemical. So we decided, let's fill it with water and do a water test on it as well because it's very difficult to determine where the leaks are with air pressure because with the pipes being insulated, unless there's a large leak, you just don't hear that air leaking. So you almost have to put water in to test it. And again, they did that last week, well, this week, they did it Thursday. And I believe they're down there today to repair two more leaks that they found. Not saying that they'll have them all, but at this point, they feel that we're going to be ready maybe to flush the system with the chemical if we choose to do that. And then hopefully fill up with glycol and if everything goes okay and they don't encounter any more problems, we could have, should have cooling for the first student day of school in East York.
Was this, I understand, and I'm not an engineer, okay, but was this something that was mentioned as a possible cost, an incremental cost for renovating this project now?
I don't think it was. Could have been anticipated hindsight, maybe could have. Could have at least been brought to our attention that, you know, there are possibilities that you may have some gasket failures. There were no leaks in the system prior to renovation at all. It was a tight system, no leaks. I totally understand that a system sitting dry can develop the leaks, the gaskets can develop cracks, so on and so forth. So I can understand that. But should have been brought to our attention that it could happen perhaps, yeah.
So as we look at other buildings, I hope that this will be considered.
Yeah.
Because this can't be their first rodeo of bleeding out a system, letting it sit dry and not letting us know that potentially you would have, and this is not a small number, it's $76,000. It puts my intent up of, well, when we start pumping stuff through the system again, what else is sitting out there? That's a ticking time bomb that they should be bringing to our attention because they are the experienced engineer.
Yeah, it also asks us, it begs us to keep that list as well, James.
Absolutely.
That's the lesson learned here, say, well, what's the process using your term? And it's not the first time they've done it certainly, or whoever did a system like this. Barry, you said there was a large amount saved by not replacing the piping. What do you think that is?
I can't say what that is right now, Drew, I could find that out for you. I know we discussed that at the beginning of the project. There are substantial, what we call black pipe in that building, which is anywhere from six inches to four inches. And to remove all that and replace it, that's why we evaluated, do we need to do that? Because there was a cost involved with that and I can find out what that is for you. Because they did throw that figure out.
It's a piping that's both in the ceilings and in the walls.
It's the main piping. Now, all of that main piping is copper branches that go down to the various units and all of that is in good condition and no need to replace that. And as well, as so is the black piping. But the other problem with the black piping, if you were to replace that, is very time consuming. Now, that would involve, of course, we did remove the ceilings, but that would involve, more than likely, we would have had to do that in various phases. We couldn't have gotten all that done in one summer just because of the nature of how much work is involved with it. So that's another reason why I think we considered not doing it. But again, we had, all the indication we had was piping was in good shape and no need to replace it. I did see an internal piece of the pipe and yes, it was in good shape. It depends upon how your chemical treatment is over the years as far as the condition of your piping. And we've always taken care of all of our systems, good chemical treatment. And so the piping itself is in good shape, it's just these gaskets that developed a leak and that's common.
Looking ahead, what other buildings might be candidates for this type of work if that?
Well, eventually the high school, Indian Rock.
All right, so that's a reason why we ought to have a written protocol now.
Yeah.
So we can review that and make sure that's followed in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, at least we should be made aware of what possibilities could exist.
I mean, it's easy for us to sit here now and say, oh, we should have this, we should have that.
Yeah.
But knowing that now, let's get it formalized.
Putting our bid specs.
You know, as an optional and then if it's not needed, it comes off the cost.
Well, we also talked about the next time we put in a unit price for repairing any leaks. I'll say replacing gaskets because if you just put a unit price in for repairing a leak, that's tough because that could be a two-minute project, it could be a two-day project. But you can put some unit prices in there that would help too. That way you have a pretty good idea of what you're getting into.
Are you comfortable with the competency of the contractor?
Yeah, I think so. They worked for us before and.
Just late date, it probably doesn't matter for them.
Yeah, I've been down there every day and they seem to be doing a really good job and seem to be very conscientious of what they're doing. And they're taking some steps to do things, I'll say above and beyond, that they want to do it right. Because what they did do is they uncovered, we had a lot of issues when that system was first installed. We had a terrible contractor that installed that. And basically, they had to repipe the entire mechanical room before we would accept it. It was terrible. And we dealt with a lot of issues with that system after it was installed with that contractor. So that was a contractor I really never wanted to see come back. But there were a lot of issues that were uncovered here above ceilings that unfortunately go back to that day one. And nothing that's going to cost us additional money, but it's just things that SSM has taken to another level, said, gee, you know, they had that valve in backwards, we're going to turn it around while we're doing this. So they've done a lot of additional for us kind of free grabs.
So then my last question, I'll be quiet, is are we going to be sitting here in two years and you telling us we need to replace that black pipe piping in the building because we think we're okay now?
Well, I hope not. No, I mean, all indications of that black pipe, it looks like it's in very good condition. And something like that can last for 80 to 100 years. So I can't see that as long as we keep up with our chemical treatment and as long as the pipe that we've inspected is typical of what's throughout the building. And again, we're going by the architect or the engineer's recommendations too as to, you know, you really don't need to replace that. So I certainly would hope not. Now, I think cleaning it will help and also putting the filter in will help. But it's, there's no indications that there's any failure of that pipe right now.
How old is it?
That was put in 18 years ago. So it's really not old for black pipe.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest concern I have is exactly where it's changed. It's hindsight. The installation, the filtering, the flush, the double flush, all of that stuff besides the leaks themselves should have been an option for us in the beginning of this process. They were highly predictable. And that is a concern, that a lot of this cost is in that process. And they should have thrown that out like, hey, we strongly recommend that you flush, you flush the system while it's in a state. Especially when one of the rationales is, it's very likely it's going to clog up your new units. I mean, that brings badly to me that they didn't prep us properly upfront.
That was bringing in a bid low enough that they thought it would be approved.
But like I said, that should have been, you know, like, hey, here's the real bid. Here's the other seven things that really you need to do too. I mean, that should have been the consideration on our end upfront and then we could have considered it. We would have chose to do it at that point in time. And, you know, like I said, it's a lesson learned, but we want to make sure we don't produce expensive money.
Well, and you're 100% right because even brand-new systems are flushed to get out any debris. It could be solder, it could be whatever. So even brand-new systems are flushed. And maybe it's something that I should have picked up on the specs and thought, well, we should have that in there. I didn't. I just assumed that the engineers, we were working with a different engineering group. And I just assumed that, you know, they had their act together and what they're recommending. They're certainly more knowledgeable than I am. I just have experience as far as my knowledge, but experience goes a long way too. But I'm just taking their word for it. But it's not unusual to have new systems flushed with chemical and flushing several times to get out all that debris from the initial installation.
Who's in, who's in here, Paragon?
Yes.
Can we get an answer from them why this wasn't brought to our attention?
Well, I think that will be the next question I anticipated from the board, maybe an explanation.
I mean, they need to be scolded.
It is questionable.
The competition, did any of the other bidders include this?
No, no, they would only really bid what's in the specification.
Right.
Now, sometimes.
So it gets back to the specs.
Sometimes a contractor may, after reading the spec, may question the specification and say, hey, are you sure you don't want to? Or did you miss this or we don't recommend? Sometimes they will do that. But we didn't hear any of that from any other.
Who is that on? Is that only the architect?
Yeah.
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the problem here is that we, you know, I mean, I think we work with Paragon on a lot of stuff, right?
Well, we really just started with them.
Local company. I mean, those companies need to understand that we have an ex, like, our expectation is that we should be able to trust you to make solid recommendations on what we should do and not really worry about, like, if it's too expensive for what we said. Make the solid technical recommendation and let us look at the pricing and ask you for, you know, for the deductions and things. And so they need to understand that's the way we want to operate. So I feel like they need a slap on the wrist for not pointing this out at least. So that next time they come in and go, okay, we understand you guys want to know all the possibilities and all the real recommendations that you just don't want the project to come in for this amount of money throughout. But what's it really supposed to actually cost?
Does anybody remember what the original estimate of this was? I've looked, I can't, I don't have my little sheet with me.
That and what the budget costs for the project.
Well, I think if I'm right, you know, don't quote me, but the overall budget for that project, we came in about a million dollars last. Now, that's overall, not mechanical, that's.
So a million dollars less than what?
But, but if you remember now, there's a phase two of this project. And there were things that were moved out of phase one and moved into phase two. So that original budget of, and again, I know there was about a million dollars difference between what we budgeted and what they actually came in. Some of that will be shifted to phase two. How much of that, I'm not sure, but the roof is a big piece there.
So what, $75,000 is what percentage is an over?
We figured that. I believe Paragon might have mentioned 3%. If you were to have a 10% contingency of the project, and that was based on, I believe, the original.
The total.
I believe, yeah, the original. The three million. Yeah, I believe that was based on that. That's another thing moving forward. We want to make sure that in any future projects, and we've always done it in the past. I don't have the knowledge of whether we did it on this project. We want to make sure that we have a percent of a contingency built into our budget.
5% contingency.
Yeah, and it depends on if it's renovation, that might be a little bit more than, a roofing project's pretty simple. You might not need a big contingency on that. But when you get into renovation, there's a lot of unknowns there. And there you might want to make sure that you have a good contingency built into the project. And usually the architect or engineer will recommend what that should be based on the nature of the work.
How are our bids selected now? Is it just flatline lowest cost?
There are other things when.
I mean, reputation, those kinds of things, but I mean, when it comes to financial, is it bottom call, lowest?
Pretty much. It's basically, I think it's the lowest responsible bidder you must accept unless you have very, very good documentation as to why not to accept them the next time. Prime example is the contractor that actually installed that system at East York. And again, we had a lot of problems with it. It was a terrible con, terrible job. Well, I never wanted to see him come back, but it's not that easy for me to say that. There has to be written documentation right from the start. Well, they bid on another one of our projects, but they bid on the plumbing part, not HVAC. And I said, no, 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 we don't want them. Well, we checked with the solicitor and he said, it's not that easy to say no. He said, all they have to do is come back and say, well, first of all, that was HVAC, this is plumbing, it's a different division. Or we have a family man job, he's no longer with us, so you won't experience these problems. He said, so there's a lot of, if you don't accept that low bidder the next time, you've got to have your ducks in orders.
You almost need to win a legal battle against them to preclude them from bidding on your project again. It's very difficult.
And then what happens, till you receive those bids, you don't know who the low bidder is. Now you receive them, you see, oh, it's the same contractor we don't want to back. Now you've got to go fight him, which will put the project to a stop until.
So going on Mike and James's point, we can smack their hands all they want, but there's nothing really that is going to hold them accountable to putting in some of these.
Well, they're two different things. It's not the contractor, it's the engineering people that we want to smack their hands.
The engineering people are the ones that wrote our specs.
And that's a service. We don't have to do a little bit on.
Yeah, ultimately, they're responsible. And again, they're somewhat new to us, at least on a project of this size, they're new to us. It's not, this isn't new to their field obviously, but they're new to us. And maybe they don't understand our expectations, but I think they're all pretty much the same. I would think they'd want to let us know what to anticipate, what we could anticipate. In the past, we've done that. In the past, I know there's been a lot more frequent inspections from our engineer, sometimes daily inspections or weekly inspections, and we're not quite seeing that here with Paragon now over the last several weeks. I've really become concerned about this project. I've had a lot of conversation with them and I think they're starting to see the direction that we want them to go in. And we're expecting them to take more responsibility than what they are. So I think that's becoming pretty plain and clear to them, but they probably need to hear.
I think that has to be explicit.
I was going to say, I think they need to hear it from the board as well, not just me.
If I were sitting in their position, I heard this kind of conversation, I'd be embarrassed.
I'd be concerned.
This is very basic.
So why aren't they here?
They were here for the facilities committee and we didn't know if, how in-depth we were going to go today. So I said, hey, I'll come and try to explain things. But again, that might be a conversation you want to have with them prior to. Now, they're working, if I'm correct, they're working for Core. They're not working directly for us. That's under Core's contract. Sometimes a mechanical contractor has a separate contract with us versus the architectural engineer. But in this project, Paragon is working for Core now. We interviewed Paragon as well as a couple others because at that time, there was maybe a little desire to get away from our former mechanical engineer. And we felt comfortable with Paragon, so we instructed Core. If Core felt their prices were in line, that give them a try. So this was kind of a.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, we had similar problems with previous mechanical engineers over time.
Yeah. Well, I think what happens is, and I think what you'll find is, everybody makes mistakes. And sometimes you make one or two mistakes and you think, jeez, we need to bring somebody else in. Well, in my world, I've been through this 30-some years and everybody's going to make mistakes. And we bring that person in, they're going to make mistakes too. So after a year or two, it's like, eh, let's find somebody else. It kind of, it happens. But I think you have to, well, I was going to say, I think you have to, you're 100% right, Drew, because I think what you have to do is really look at the mistakes and feel, are they legitimate or aren't they? You know, or should they have been caught or is this really? So you've got to look at it.
Well, this, I don't want to belabor this, we're here on a Saturday morning, but it almost reminds me of some of the drama that's on some of these TV, fixer-upers. You just wonder why in the world aren't these inspections done upfront?
Where's Holmes when you need him?
Before, yeah, why are you committing to this before you've done the basic inspection? And in the case of the pipe, what would have, I mean, this is all rhetorical, but what would have prevented somebody from just slicing open that pipe to see what the interior condition was? And do that even prior to the bid to say, well, for us to bid this responsibly, we need to open your system up. Nobody does that. Yeah, I would, I would, I would have gone toward the contingency. Because what I would have said if I were them was, this is how all these pipes are. You don't know the state. You know, I can inspect all you want, but as soon as you put it back under pressure, you may have problems. Here are the things that you should consider. That would be what I'd like to see on a piece of paper so that they'll at least know it's coming.
They need to know to tell us that stuff. I think we need to be, like you said, you know, they didn't inspect as often as what we're used to. But did we tell them that our expectation was? And if we don't, that's, you know, we own, we own a chunk of this. With that said though, we are relying on someone we think has the expertise to tell us and make solid recommendations. I think we are probably a very careful consumer here. You know, we're on the high end, like, we don't want, we don't want the middle of the road. We want you to tell us what all these possibilities are and what all the recommended upgrades would be. We may not accept them, but we need to see them. And, you know, they might not know that. So I think we need to be very clear and have written expectations upfront, which might help set the tone for them when they're evaluating and working with us, like, oh, these guys are essence that come out every day and inspect them. Like, they're very critical consumers. So given that, they're going to be picky and we're going to tell them, these are things that are going to happen. And we want them to know that. We want to know that stuff as much upfront as we can.
Well, from our vantage point, it's money well spent. Obviously, they're not going to come out every day and inspect, you know, free. We're going to have to pay for that, but it's money well spent to avoid something like this. They need to know that.
Want to be on it upfront. I mean, so, and if they know that's the kind of consumer we are, I think, I think there are definitely things right upfront that we can set the tone with them and get what we want without these surprises. And yeah, it'll cost us more. But at least we get, there's, you know, it's not like, wow, they didn't really perform that as well as we thought. Like, well, you know, they're either going to, they're either going to do what we expect or not. But we shouldn't expect them to read our minds on them.
Well, I think we're at a point where we could ask Barry and/or the engineers to help to put together a process so that we can look at that, knowing what we now know about this and anticipating that we've got two or three major projects like this staring us in the face. So let's make sure that we're not having the same conversation.
The underlying thing that scares me as we look is the pool of facilities money is shrinking. And every time we go back and we do something like this, it comes out of that pool. So we want to make sure that we're thinking ahead and really allocating it where it needs to go. Did we send the bids out or release, you know, requests for bids for the roof already? I think we just did that.
For East York? No, I think what you've done is you've approved Core to do the.
Do the design.
Do the design and so forth. So that's, I think, in process now? So yes.
We have a big project and we can hopefully get this process in place. Well, I mean, Core's the one that brought Paragon in, right?
Well, and with our blessing in a sense, as I said, we kind of.
Core understands our expectations. We probably need to have a pretty serious conversation with Core about, hey, this is what we didn't like here. This is what we want to see moving forward because we've been doing a lot of projects with them. We want to dial them into our expectations.
Should we have them at the next facilities committee meeting as an agenda item?
What is exactly you're going to ask them at the facility meeting? What is it exactly you're going to ask Core?
Why are you not protecting our interests? No. But in a nutshell.
Explain to them that that, that they need to protect our interests later and that that's what we expect in the future.
Yeah, it's really about how, what our expectations are in these projects and how we expect them to be our advocate.
How we can put that in effect, is that what you're saying?
That's part of it.
And say, there, so move forward.
Yep, that's part of it.
Absolutely.
When is that?
Because that's what really needs to be in the specifications. The next one is September 5th. September 5th. September 5th is the next meeting, next facilities meeting.
Oh, I have it in my calendar.
4:30.
And I think that's very important that we do have that conversation with Core because as we get into the second phase, second order phase, this will be a lot of tough decisions for Core to make of what we want to do at East York. And of course, you guys are going to have a bigger picture with the whole district. But, so I think it's important to lay out with Core what our expectations are because the next phase is going to be a little bit more involved as far as how we're going to stage the project since we're pretty carpeted and that involves a lot of moving furniture and gutting classrooms totally. And that's going to be a big one on our part. So we got, this is important if we do meet with Core, make sure they know our expectations and when this job has to be finished so they can keep a constant eye on the progress and make sure that it's done on time.
The only programming impact we'd be eyeing is not, students would still be able to report that day. There just may not be cooling if they don't get it done.
Correct. We've experienced that before in startup cooling systems and maybe, you know. So that's not too much a problem. On the good side, we did have Springer County County Inspector, they're a building codes inspector. He was in the building yesterday. He was in the building yesterday and sees no reason why we can't open the building. Now, that front entrance that we're renovating will not be done, but there will be egress from that part of the building. And he said, as long as there's egress, the kids can get out, no tripping hazards. He said he will grant us temporary occupancy. The rest of the building, he's fine with. There'll be air circulation in every room, the fans will be running, whether or not